Six thirty.
You're on the highway.
Meeting of the non-justified select board of order. John?
Yes.
Anne says yes, Kathy?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
This meeting is being recorded. And the first item on the agenda is public comments on non-agenda items. Is there anyone here who wants to make a public comment here or online? Wants to make a public comment on non-agenda items?
I actually have a question.
Okay.
So there was some discussion on the Facebook page last week about Scouts not providing parking for singing beach anymore. I'm just curious, do we know what the impact will be on summer parking? Do we know if somebody else is providing it? Or we're just going to be short spaces?
I don't know, but Brad?
I don't believe that there'll be parking, additional parking provided.
Okay. Do we know how many parking spaces we're going to lose? So it just might be worth putting on the agenda for future meetings. We're losing 25 parking spaces and it's a nice summer. You know, are we providing satellite parking at the school?
I discussed with, first, I was made aware of this on Facebook. Actually, I think Mark McCoy mentioned it. And then went off to Facebook. Cheryl called me or texted me on Saturday, I know what I knew. We discussed options as far as that goes. And so I then touched base with one of the principals. And he explained why they're not doing it. And so that's my, and then I asked him again if he'd be interested, if the town would take. There were a lot of responses, I'm gonna ask all of us.
Yeah.
There's a lot of micromanagement that goes on from Hobbs' point as far as getting that parking. And Jason Walken just got tired of it, giving up his weekends every year for whatever. And I didn't realize how much he did, and I have to respect him for what he did. So I made the offer that if the town were to take it over, totally staff it and manage it, would there be any appetite towards that? And at this point, there was none.
Okay.
And so I would say that, yeah, we're going to be 2020. Not just parking, that's not, I mean, we were going to use it, but I think Cheryl's concept was below the parking for residents up there.
Right, right.
Okay. So it doesn't impact, I mean, what impacts is people driving. So maybe we...
Yeah, I didn't mean to get into a big discussion now, but I think if we're gonna lose...
Well, we're gonna have to play it next weekend, so.
Get it, yeah.
Or maybe we stop looking at the beach.
The schools, oh, the schools are still in session, right? They're still in session.
Sweeney Park.
June vacays.
And Sweeney has weekends till baseball going through the middle of June. So I'm not quite sure. We can try to revisit it. I got a cold response.
In connection with that, what's going on with the golf carts? Anything?
Yeah, I was thinking about...
Beach bums?
The beach bums?
Haven't heard anything.
I think they're going off to college now.
Yeah, yeah, life evolves.
Nothing, nothing came back.
Yeah, I assumed.
They're in your old license.
I assumed that they're done.
Yeah.
Oh, and that's, that's even a bigger, you can't even make Plan B.
It's just unfortunate this is all coming up last minute, you know, that's...
Well, I think that we knew about it, I think, I think the Boy Scouts were made aware of it about two weeks ago.
Oh, they were.
Mark mentioned it too.
First time I heard that today.
First time I heard this on the Facebook page.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know what alternatives there are at this point.
That was a letter in the cricket.
Kind of surprised there was that much activity.
It had a letter last night.
It was too, but I was...
When I was a kid, the Scouts used to run it, and they just ran it and that was it. There was no involvement from anybody else.
I wasn't going to debate what I was told.
No, I'm not saying things have changed either.
Because I was shocked, I thought the Scout leader, whoever shows up, sets up a chair, the kids show up, set up their stuff, and they're gone.
Yeah.
So to this point, you know, I can try again, but I don't think it's going to be very successful.
Okay, so the intention is that there will be no parking?
That's my understanding. Okay. I have, I cannot either confirm nor deny.
Okay.
All right. I'm basing this on just the tenor of a text exchange.
Okay. I wonder how in the absence of some organization, we're going, the Harvard's point is going to keep people from parking there.
That's a good question.
Right.
Yeah, now there's no supervision.
Right, right.
Not that there was a law intentionally.
I, let's, we're gonna have to watch a play out, I guess.
Yep.
I mean, you can't block it off because there's MBTA parking.
Right.
Right.
Give it back.
Yeah.
I can't, oh.
People find out next weekend.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you want a position to get a little bit more information, perhaps?
I can try.
Okay.
I can try, I mean, it's, I can speculate as to a lot of different reasons, none of which are what we're discussing here.
So do you want me to put it on the action item list?
Yes, please.
And put it in for next, next meeting, or?
Next meeting.
Okay.
Well, this weekend isn't looking real good.
Yeah.
Weatherwise.
Yes, but, I guess.
Except for you're counting on the beach. I mean, we talked to some local businesses, they're concerned about it too. Cap Dusties, I'm sure Provo is going to loosen business, you know, Crosby's will loosen business, so.
He's fine, yeah.
You know, everything, it's gonna impact, so we gotta look at, you know, I just don't know what, it was a private, it's a private lies.
Right. It's not like, yeah.
Right. So along those same lines, my other question was the, the public bathroom signs were supposed to go up for this weekend, is that happening, or?
I'll find out from DPW. I know they were ordered.
The ones for, what about the Duncan and the...
Yeah, I told the need about those. Yeah, so we're just getting our agreements sent back. They're gonna start on Monday.
So they're gonna start Memorial Day?
Yes.
Okay.
Memorial Day till Labor Day.
So we should see a sign at Bravo?
Aye. Bravo and Dunkins. Yep.
And, and the town, all here.
Yes, and purchase required.
Okay. Thank you.
Bye, Monday.
Um, hey, Ryan. This next item is the chairman's report. And the first is, as everybody, as I said, Monday is Memorial Day. I will be at the service and the parade.
What day is that? I mean, what time is that?
Usually Monday.
Yeah. It starts at nine.
Nine at the Legion.
At the Legion.
All right. I'm not in charge of my social schedule, but right now...
If it fits, it'd be nice, I mean, it's...
Yep.
Yep.
We've got this, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I'm babysitting, so if I'm not babysitting, I'll be there.
That's, as, as long as somebody shows up so that it looks as if you care.
We don't care.
I know you care. The other thing from my report is that I've got a records request for information about the rentals, from rental space, boat spaces for Manchester Marine. And, I know we're not talking about this seriously until the fall, but they have rented 12 spaces of the 10 that they, we thought they were going to rent, they might rent.
That's impressive.
And the three are from the waiting list, seven are not from the waiting list, and two are confusing because the names look like somebody on the waiting list, but they're not quite right. So. The other piece of information that came from that is that in 2023, Manchester Marine had 12 mooring's, mooring permits, and in '24, they had 22, and in '25, they appear to have 36. Manchester Marine is doing very well on mooring's, on mooring permits. That is the end of my notes. Do we have anything for action items that we follow by?
It's all on the agenda.
Yeah, a lot of them.
Okay. Thank you. The next thing on the agenda is the facility planning committee discussion. Chuck's recommendation and Greg's recommendation that this be a standing committee rather than a task force, that we nominate people for, yeah, ideas, people will serve three years, but we start with staggered, staggered terms of it. We're not replacing the whole committee at once. Chuck or Nate, do you have anything beyond that?
No, I think you put it right out there. I mean, we had memo, questions, a lot of stuff, but it seems like it led us off a little bit better to a full-time committee because we just have so much. It's not like we just have a DPW project or just have a public safety. We kind of have, you know, everything on the horizon and some, some level, so seems like it makes a little bit more sense that way. But open to whatever suggestions or thoughts or comments you guys might have.
Mike, ordinarily, our committees are odd numbers. It is.
You could put a third at-large, I guess. I don't think there's a need for a full-time other committee. So, you know, another at-large would be fine, I guess.
Yeah, just a question, Chuck. Have you had experience or seen this type of committee in other communities around here?
Not personal experience, but I did believe that there's a few other communities that have, have done this type of thing before. Black and on the wrong head where, which ones, but yeah, I believe it's been done before.
I'd be interested, no, I, anybody in the, you know, the North Shore in particular?
Yeah.
Because we can identify with their challenges.
Right. I'll, I'll do a little bit more digging on that, I don't know if that means, but I do know that it's been done before, I just don't know where exactly.
I, one, one more suggestion, and that is that the term, the three-year term be applied to the at-large members and that the members that are appointed by various committees should be, should not be term limited. Because, well, with the select board, we never know who's going to be here next year.
That's the point, they're kind of term limited.
Well, that's why.
Right, I guess it would just be, you know, so long as you're on the board, the longer teams are ready, you won, and then otherwise...
Unless your committee decides you're being a nuisance and...
Or just, you know, if somebody wants to rotate off it, then they just need to get another one on.
Yeah.
That's, makes sense.
Okay. Any, Brian, any?
No, I, I read the memo oddly, and I think it's a good starting point, but I don't want to get bogged down in committees, I don't want to get done here. It's just a lot.
Kathy? Yeah, I think it's a little unclear what the deliver, one of the things we asked for at the last meeting were the deliverables. So I, I just let it, I'm just relooking at the memo here.
So it's, it's down at the bar, there are like seven bullets, but the most pertinent one immediately would be the basis of design after the first 60 days or so, you know, I was just putting a number on it to make it timely, but, you know, they need to review the information we have, they need to, you know, hopefully we can take a tour, John took a tour a couple of weeks ago, or a week and a half ago. I think that definitely shed some light on what we're up against and what we're lacking, so I think that's an important step. And then I think we need to finalize our current engagement with our consultant, which would be a basis of design report, which is what, so that would be the buy-in that we need to go to the, you know, design phase.
So I, I see a mix, I, I, I think I understand what you're referring to. It says immediate action and commitment, is that the section?
Yeah.
Okay. So I see a mix of activities so that people who join the committee understand what their commitment, time commitment is, et cetera. So I get that, and that's good. But as far as actual deliverables or outcomes, I think I see two, confirm or recommend basis of design criteria, and then confirm or recommend alternative use for vacated sites. Those are the only two deliverables I see on that list.
Yep. Do any others?
I'm just asking to, I would like a clarification, so I think there's, I think we're mixing things here, and one of the reasons we were initially thinking a task force is because in order, you know, how long is it going to take to complete these deliverables? And if these deliverables are met, then what, you know, what else are these people going to meet and discuss?
Well, they would go to the next phases of design and implementation. So that's, that's why it led us off better to being a standing task force or committee rather than a task force, is because, you know, it would be fine, if you guys don't want to do a, you know, a full committee, that's fine, but, you know, once we get through this 60 days and we do a basis of design, that's not really the end of the story. And so we were hoping to get a little bit more continuity over the coming years by making a committee, but again, we're not...
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not pushing back on that per se, I'm just trying to understand, like, if I look at the committee charters for some of the other committees, they will say, purpose of this committee is to advise the select board on X, Y, and Z, or...
Right, I think we, I think we did say that in the memo.
So I'm just, I, I think maybe just clarifying a little bit. So they know when they're done, I guess, the reason for really calling out what the...
There is no domino, there is no domino, it's a standing committee.
And, and...
Yeah, yeah.
This is the first step, is the DPW.
Yeah, but there are dozens, there are dozens facilities here.
So is their job then to advise the select board, or just advise the local council?
Yes.
Yeah.
Roles and responsibilities.
That's what we're saying.
Is there anything you could add to this that would...
Add whatever you want.
That would clarify when a committee is no longer needed?
I mean, I, I, I'm not 100% sure I can answer that, because it depends on when we finish our facilities work as a town.
Which is never.
Okay.
Maybe, yeah.
Yeah, we've got after, after the police and fire.
Yeah, then we go on to wastewater treatment.
Wastewater, yep.
Yeah, okay, then we go on to...
That's probably at that point, so at some point, you'll be working on, you know, they...
I guess I'd say being very active over the next decade and, you know, maybe only slightly less active the decade after that, but it's pretty good running.
So, so somebody, so somebody, you know, I think it was Brian just mentioned PFAS. Is this, this, this is a facilities planning committee, so that would not be in scope, correct, PFAS?
Out of the...
And the water facilities, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we can draw a line wherever you guys want, I mean, it's, you know, we'll be a...
All I'm asking is for there to be very clear boundaries, because, you know, there's your job and your, your organization's job, and, and you know what you need to do, and just be really clear what you want this committee to advise you on, and what is the scope? If there's seven things in the facilities master plan, then let's be clear and list those. I just, like I said, when we, when we, when we're not clear, it's hard to know when to shut a committee off, and I'm not sure it needs to exist forever.
I think that that becomes a role of future select board to determine.
I understand, and I, just like I said, based on the activity I did two years ago, it's, it's, there's evidence that it doesn't get looked at, it just gets forgotten, that's all, that's the only...
I've got a question. You had mentioned a clerk of the works associated with PFAS at some point, right, Chuck?
Yep.
Where does that fit in all of this?
So we, we hired the clerk of the works, that was, I believe, would it be one year in Jan, July, or two years? I think one year in July, so we hired him last year. So he was slated, or he is slated to, you know, basically a clerk of the works for the wastewater upgrades, as well as, as well as the PFAS upgrades. And to be said, we get a DPW facility, you know, to construction in five years, because that one was one that we agreed, we all agreed, that, you know, it's five years to get through this first kind of rush of projects. I don't know if you would really call it rushing in five years, but basically those, those three big ones, wastewater, PFAS, DPW, and then at the end of that five years, it was, that position was supposed to sunset and not be, you know, not be kept on. So that's, that's our goal, that's our, that's what we've, we all agree to. But he's hired, he's, he's working, he's doing a good job, he's very, very helpful in getting these projects kind of to fruition.
Okay, should that be another position that's included in this group?
I think I would put that under me and, me and Nate to bring in if needed, but I don't think it's something that needs to be part of the committee.
Okay.
I have a question just insularly, this is from Nate, I guess. What is the status of the 197 School Street? Is that fully cleaned now, or are we still waiting for Black Earth to get some stuff out of there, or what?
There's still some stuff there, but it's, it's, ours getting very small every day, so there, the idea was that they're going to sell the finished compost out of there this spring, which, you know, we're getting towards the end of spring. So I, I think it'll be pretty much out of there, you know, within the month, or the next month.
And then we can complete whatever studies have to be done.
I didn't catch that, if that was a question.
Then are we still, there are still some studies that have to be done over there? Or have we cleared all those?
No, the, well, no, we're, we've done the investigations on the geotech boring stuff, the geothermal well was done, the survey is, I don't think it's done, so we probably do need to get the surveyor back up there, but there's no study that has to be completed, right, for, for that. The, I think the study would be the geotechnical information, which that's, the field work is done, we do not have the reports back.
I think we can all agree that that becomes the logjam right there. Once we get that rolling, everything else has to fall into place. That's what I, priorities at this point.
Yeah.
Are we gonna do interviews for at-large? Go through that whole process?
I think that's probably what we need to do.
When do you want to assemble this group? What are we, what are we looking for to assemble this group?
I think the next thing is to have a clear statement of purpose. And, and, and there's a mix of what we're going to do right now and...
Like, do we need to list out projects, or?
Um, to whom do they report? What? Yeah, go ahead.
But it's, it's tough to list out projects. I think it's, you know, we can, we can revisit it in a year, or two years, or three years, but the project thing is a little tougher, because, you know, again, you want to try and draw a line around the projects, and, you know, I guess DPW slash public safety is, you know, the biggest kind of circle, but, you know, we do have a lot of other town facilities that seem like would slide into this.
On the lines of this committee exists to advise the selectmen and the DPW on facilities projects.
Right. I think that, I think that's in the, the...
I think it is.
...parasite of that. Five formal recommendations to the select board of finance committee regarding presiation of and implementation of town facility projects.
Because I think one of the things we were getting hot on, you know, in our last meeting, was the, you know, the idea that, you know, we build a public safety, we build a DPW, but then what? What about the space that's vacated at Town Hall? What about the space that's vacated at School Street? What about the space that's vacated at Busch Street? And so I think, you know, once we kind of get through this next 60 days, we find out where we stand on, you know, all of the above. We then, you know, they make a recommendation, but they're not the ones that will be kind of calling the shots, and here's a recommendation based on all the deliberation and reporting that we've done, just back to the select board and, you know, the FinTom, or, I'm not married to any of these things, we can be whoever we want, but be as a town administrator. But then, yeah, then, then we have to, you know, move, move forward, and so I think that's the goal.
So, so the intention really is instead of you showing up here very frequently for permission or to provide information on what you're going to do and when you're going to do it, this committee then kind of is a buffer and will facilitate a lot of those decisions, they move along, and you, you don't have to be in front of us as much as you otherwise would.
It's, it's not just us, it's everybody else.
Well, yeah.
Right. So, you know, this is breaking down a silo, because we, we have lots of silos, you know, myself included, you know, the DPW office becomes a silo when we take on these projects. You know, we go to the select board, you know, two weeks ago, but we didn't go to the planning board, we didn't go to TomTom, and so even if we had made decisions, you know, two weeks ago, we wouldn't have been able to move on those decisions until then we circle back to all the other boards and committees that are going to have...
I think it's a good approach, I mean, that's why we approved it. I, I'm just looking for a little bit more clarity around the boundaries, because anything could fall into the category, there's a lot of things that could fall into the category of facilities, and you don't want to get into the situation where you're just trying to, you know, get some small stuff done and then, you know, trying to advise you on things where they really don't need to advise you. This is for the big things, right? This is for the facilities master plan, you know, the, the school committee, when they have their building committees, you know when they're done, right? And so is there a short list of things?
The school really only has one facility, though, they don't...
Well, they start a new committee every time they have a new facility.
Right, but I mean...
But the problem here is we can't do that, because, like we saw two weeks ago, when we started talking about just DPW, and we started asking questions about police and fire, then we started asking questions about Town Hall, and I can't answer those questions, so this is my best attempt to try and, to, you know, that committee. And I, I think, I'm not, I'm not claiming I'm going to this committee for, you know, odds and ends, that's for sure. So maybe the, the idea is capital, but capital can also become a pretty big thing, so, I don't know, I, I think, I don't have a good way to say it, I'll have to update you in three months, like, we just have to see where we end up.
Yeah, I think, but when I hear about PFAS and stuff like that, I just, that wasn't what I envisioned this.
Yeah. Okay. What I'd like to be, before we advertise for people, I'd like to have a one-page.
Yeah.
This is the, these are the people we're looking, these are the people who will be on the committee, and I think that just the four bullets of roles and responsibilities is enough to get started.
Who's saying four bullets?
This is, the FPC will provide formal recommendations, offer preliminary design guidance, streamline the review process.
I'm sorry, got it.
Got it. And evaluate buildings. Would those four things encapsulate it well enough for you, Kathy?
Yeah, thanks. Like I said, I just, I have a question. Does, does the PFAS remediation work fall into this or not? Because you mentioned it, and that...
No, I mentioned it.
I'm sorry, you mentioned it.
No, okay, I worked it quick.
Okay. I'm just saying, that, that...
I'm protecting you.
That doesn't align with my vision of a facility, it's a facilities committee, but if somebody needs to, you know, make some enhancements to the process for cleaning water, I'm not sure why this committee would have any say in that whatsoever, so I got confused by that.
That's pretty facilities-driven. The big addition under the water department in the group, you think?
We, I mean, we will have to add a building to the well, which is right in between the two schools and adjacent to, you know, the county club, so they're not going to be, I'm not asking the facility group to make recommendations on cleaning the water, that will, that will be the last.
Right.
I am asking them for input on, you know, there, there will be a, a, a design element that needs to be discussed, which is, do we match the brick buildings that have been there for, you know, half a century or whatever? Or do we go with a metal-clad building, because that's going to be a cheaper alternative? So there, there may be some input that would be beneficial for the committee to weigh in on, as well as, you know, get input from their member boards and committees.
Is there any, is there any way we could... Is there any way we could just add something like for this committee is advising us on new buildings or annexes or additional, you know, something that's.
The reuse of this building is going to be a major.
That would be on the list.
Yeah, and just reuse of existing spaces here, but I just, I'm just looking for a little boundary so they don't go out.
Even the harbor master.
You know, but maybe not.
Boundary can be enforced, get enforced by the DPW.
Yes.
I don't know how you like boxes. You can set it one.
Yeah. No, I, 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 I want, I, we have a Sarah Malish there, she has.
Yes, Sarah.
Now, I'm wondering if you can reference the 25-year facilities plan. Because that's listing all of the big projects coming along. It was in the Finance Committee annual report.
Is what Greg put together?
Yeah, in the spreadsheet.
Finance Committee put it together.
I'm sorry, Finance Committee.
With Greg. And with DPW. Whether anyone you want, but it, but there was a 25-year plan for financing facility and that just might give some framework. Just a thought.
Yeah, I, I think that's.
That's a good guideline.
I think it's a very, it's something clear so that if people bring up an idea and it doesn't fit into that, it at least forces a conversation.
Harbor Master's office.
Yes, yes. It's on the list, so.
Okay.
I, I'd like that. Thank you, Sarah, for that idea.
So.
So that's in the one pager?
I think that will, it, it, it will fit on one page.
Reference to it is, is on the one pager.
Yeah, no, we're not going to put. But yeah.
We can get it to one page short.
Is there a, okay.
Small font.
No, it doesn't have to be. It's.
I'll take off. I'll take off the water head, it'll be fine.
Okay.
We don't need to turn your damn on.
Okay.
So are we to vote on this?
Oh, I don't think, what? I don't believe we have.
No. Let's vote on it again.
Okay. So, subject to the presentation of a one-page, what's the name of those things?
Charge.
Charter.
Charter.
Charge.
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 Will be charge for the Facilities Planning Committee. Will someone move, subject to a one-page charge for the Facilities Planning Committee that we support that and will begin looking for at-large members, pre-at-large members? Okay, further discussion. Jeff?
Yes.
Right, Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
John, yes.
Okay. So it's mostly the second page of what you said, Chuck.
Yep.
Without the, each quarter committee shall have more, no more than one, you know.
Yeah, I'll have a reference of a facility master plan.
Yep, and, okay.
Yeah, no problem. Sounds good.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is a, the management plan discussion and is there someone from the Management Plan Group? Okay. Jeff, do you have any comments on the plan that we need to see?
And the only comment I did have is, I don't know what page it was on, but under the eelgrass part, I was wondering why there was no talk about green crabs in there because they eat eelgrass.
Yeah, there's.
Under, they had a whole listing of things that were destroying the eelgrass. I know that's a pager.
Man, is there anything that you would like to see?
Uh, no, this is just a first draft, like, I'm waiting to see what the HAC comes back with. Because that was a review that Greg had mentioned was going to happen. So we don't have to comment.
But we haven't discussed.
Well, what Greg asked us for whether to discuss what you hope the final plan will contain.
Be the table of contents.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be nice if they had a consistent list of what beaches are and which, which ones are private and which ones are public and.
Yeah, I mean, I, despite looking at what's in their table of contents, it looked comprehensive. I couldn't think of anything that was missing. I think it's important that we have some public engagement though on the strategic goals.
Yeah.
I wasn't quite sure what forum that was going to take place in. At one point they had, you know, the, the thing in the high school have cafeteria and we did the round robin and stuff like that. So I just wasn't clear what method of public engagement was going to happen on this.
Yeah, I'd like them to clean up. Having just opened to a page, there is an interest in the town increasing its grant writing capability for a staff position. Yeah, we got that.
Yes.
And, and, I mean, if, as you read it or read over it, you have any thoughts of things where it's obviously written by somebody who doesn't know what we already have?
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, I didn't spend a lot of time on the details because like Greg said, they hadn't reviewed it yet. I was more looking at, does it include all of the components? And then my initial thought was, well, these strategic goals, did we, they came up with these on their own, correct? So I just think it's important to validate those first to make sure, you know, with the public, to make sure we agree with those. And then the rest of it should just kind of fall into place. Because what it didn't really mention was our, our harbor is part of our downtown, you know, and there's a lot of discussion about how do we revitalize the downtown. And so when I look at the strategic goals, I guess you could talk about that kind of stuff, the harbor's connection to the downtown and strategic goal one, but it wasn't really clear to me. So that was kind of going to be the feedback I, I gave to them is, because I'm not sure the town is in agreement of what they want the harbor to be. Do, do they want more activity in the harbor or do they want less activity in the harbor?
So.
I don't need to speak to them.
Yeah, and what time of day?
Right, right.
And I watched, I watched with a lot of anguish the expansion of the East Park docks.
Right, exactly.
Okay, so perhaps our recommendation to the Harbor Manager Plan Committee is to reach out to the community about the strategic goal. Well, do we need to clean up of the?
Got it, yeah.
As we talk through this, maybe discussion with this, this plan with, in the DIP chamber.
Yes. Right, so the downtown room is working very close, the chamber is represented on the committee even, so. I, I just feel like we're, we're going into a lot of great detail. I mean, it's a great document, but if we don't have agreement.
My opinion is that the harbor is going to be
Yeah.
For revitalization.
Well, I, I think these recommendations, they largely came out of the Coastal Vulnerability Action Plan of a couple of years ago. A lot of these things came out here. I agree, when I looked through this and I said they've got a number of these recommendations, what's important? Or, you know, how, how do you prioritize those? And you quickly come to the conclusion, they're not the guys that are supposed to be prioritizing it.
Yeah.
So I, I would like to see a prioritization here because they've got like, they've got like four or five recommendations in each category. And I'm not saying the categories are kind of prioritized, but within each category there are recommendations. Then maybe that recommendation one in that strategy number three is more important than recommendation number four in strategy number one. I, I would like to know that. And of course, we don't know that unless they talk to a few people and we get some feedback. So I, I would like to see the results with some prioritization, but they need to speak with some people before they do that.
Well, that's what I was thinking, you know, we talked a lot about how the MBTA Free Ed Committee did a great job with public engagement. I'm unfamiliar with how this particular committee is really engaging the public other than, you know, hosting, doing the legal requirements. I think this is a big enough deal that we, we may want to.
I think, I'll say this, I think that although it's a very big plan.
Until something changes and then people realize they weren't part of the conversation, so.
I think we need a finished document to.
Yeah, well, I mean, we're going to draft and so, I, I just think you start with the strategic goals and then if we agree on that.
If we don't agree on the goals.
The rest of it is.
And the fact that they don't know that we've got a grant writer isn't very important.
Exactly.
Is the engagement of the public in some way part of the scope of this initiative or we don't know?
I don't think so. I think that becomes part of the.
I, I think that's, to give us kind of a, you know, a route to follow here.
I think that maybe what the plan would be to have just reviewed by the committee. Right, their comments and then someone come to us. Tell us what they garnered out of this, what they feel, and then go from there.
That's the first point, yeah, the harbor, the committee itself. What do you think?
Do their, do their thing, come back to us with, we saw this, we saw that, we can re-review it as well, and we come up to a consensus. And then we go up searching for, you know, more of an education than input.
Again, I just think there's a fundamental question, what we want the harbor to be. And it feels like the residents, whenever we touch the harbor without them being involved in the discussion, it makes people anxious, which.
They have kind of all of those things down here, it's just they're not.
They're not in one place.
They're, they're not ranked, they're just, yeah, we know it could be this or it could be that, you know, I.
Yeah, and you need, want the public, I think, to weigh in a little bit.
Yeah, they do.
Maybe when, after they were made, perhaps after they review the document, we invite them to this meeting, but we'll be more publicized a little more, hey, we're going to have a deep discussion in the harbor.
Let the HAC do their thing.
Yeah.
Let them come to us, then we post a meeting.
Yeah.
Post a public forum.
Okay, this is not the HS, HAC.
It's a separate committee.
It's a separate committee that was.
Subcommittee, obviously. Is that we named it yet, rather than a separate?
Harbor Management Task Force, wasn't it?
That's a lot of words.
HAC, so which is it?
Harbor Management Task Force.
I don't know who's on it. Remember we created that?
Sarah Creighton is leading it.
Okay.
And they're having a meeting on Thursday at 1:00.
Oh, good.
And I will be there and say that, that we think that they need to validate the goals more broadly than just in their committee. Okay, the second part of the harbor updates is setting up listing the harbor mooring transactions. When was the mooring created? Who was it assigned? Where did that assignment come from? And I think Greg is looking, was looking for us to tell him that yes, we wanted that done. And I think it makes sense to start with the most recent and look backward rather than starting 10 years ago and just require that the Harbor Master produce this.
I agree, I think, I think that, like I said at the last time we discussed this, the bylaw was looking for some type of transaction record, I forget exactly how it was phrased, but when I looked at what Bion had, we, we don't have that. And I, I use the word audit trail, you know, something that you can just, it's like a general ledger type tracking and we don't have that, right? It can be put together, but that is a lot of work. So we start fresh with going forward, making sure we have it, and then like you said, start with the most recent stuff and.
Work back.
Work backwards. I would also suggest identifying, there have been some specific moorings that have come under question. And I would include those in the early.
Early part.
Early part, the first part of it. I, I think that's all we can do going forward.
I mean, how far, the problem is to go back further than 2012, there's nothing.
Right.
Zero, not even go off.
I don't think we'll ever get that far.
So you got to decide how far back you want to go.
I'd say five years. And then I would also say that the bulk of this work, we tabled this, it was spring and fall anyway. I think we can kick it around a bit, you know, give the Harbor Master that going for everything he lists, this is the new format we want to see. But as far as any real heavy lifting at this point, I'd like to do it down to the season.
Yeah, I agree, I think it's.
I don't want, I want, I want him on the water this.
I want him on the water boat, can't we have an intern?
Some of the information I think is in Bion's head.
Well, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, some, some of it is, you're right.
There are places where it's just complete, at least from the information from the list, the, the change list, the waiting list, the mooring list. You have to know that this person inherited a mooring from her father, she's married, she's got a different last name. And that is, as far as I know, not in the records any.
Yeah, so I think that as we go forward, we'll come up with a format, as you said, going through, starting fresh, okay? But as far as a forensic detailed analysis, the last five, six years.
I sat with Bion for a few hours one night going through it and it's not. I mean, you could spend months going through it. You're not going to get anywhere. You need, you need to start and pick a point, you want to say is five years, and then just whatever going forward, that's what you're going to do.
Well, I would start with right now for this season, making sure that if there are any changes, right? And then to Anne's point, let's start working our way back. Maybe we get as far as five years, but maybe we realize we can't get any further back than three. But I would recommend that whatever, at whatever point we let the boatyards have some of these additional moorings, I don't recall when that was.
That's a separate.
Yeah, that's a separate issue.
But, but there, if we gave the moorings, they're going to be part of the transactions.
Yeah.
Right? And so all I'm saying is whatever year that was, I don't remember. It would be nice if we could at least get that. Two years, okay. It would be in, at, at least nice to get that two years, right? Because that's where a lot of the questions came up too.
Jeff, when you sat with Bion, how many transactions on average a year?
Maybe. And.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that was my impression. I think I saw, read, I think I read a report, it was in the draft of the, the harbor, the harbor report here that we just went over. There was a page on that.
Anything like really above 15 would be. Anything like really above 15 would be a huge year.
All right, so that's not a lot of data points.
No, but it's a lot to go back.
If you add up 30 years or 20 years, yeah, it's a lot. Okay.
Starting now, any new transactions should be immediately recorded.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that audit trail type.
And it's something, I mean, this is all going to be done kind of internally somehow.
Yeah.
I think we had, I mean, there's a new person coming in in the accounting area.
Right.
And maybe.
This is what they do.
This is what they do, and the fact is, is that's a new person, but the job description didn't change so much. And so, maybe there's a little bit of time.
Absolutely.
I like that idea because you know what, it's completely independent from the harbor.
All the other stuff.
Yes, and so, that would be a good way to independently get the journal entries and the transaction list to the way it should be.
But we need to come up with wording exactly what you want. So, there's no question, a year from now, six months from now, what we're asking the harbor master to do needs to be exactly spelled out what we want.
So, every transaction is accompanied by one or two sentences, this is why this happened, or something.
Well, I would say first, I mean, what you're talking about is a database, right? And what you're talking about is what fields do you want in that database? So, at a minimum, there should be a field that identifies, this is a new, you know, an add, a change to a mooring or a delete. You know, we removed a mooring, whatever, probably not many of those, right? Add, change, delete. And then, when you get into the changes, then you want to be more specific about, okay, what are we trying, what types of changes are we recording?
I see there's a text field in every one of these.
Name change, yeah.
An auto, not an auto fill, but it won't be allowed, you won't be able to allow it to go to the next field.
So, as a former IT professional, I really don't want to design this right here. But I think at a minimum, you want those words, add, change, delete on each transaction, so you know what's happening.
But at some point, we're going to a new database.
Yeah.
And all that is not going to be part of that database, so this is going to have to be separate.
I'm sorry, what new database?
There's an application, a commercial application for managing harbors. And I would be surprised if it doesn't have something that tracks mooring changes.
That's what they do.
It should be, yeah.
What I'm saying is not with the detail that we're looking for.
Well, we won't know until we look at it.
Well, that's what I was told from, Biblehead has the same system that we're going to.
There's ways to add additional detail to the systems even, if they.
Okay, I think what we have agreement on is that in some form, the harbor master should track mooring changes going forward, starting immediately.
Yes.
Yep. Starting now.
Yes, is there a motion?
There's a motion that the harbor master start tracking going forward, everything that's involved in mooring changes. And, you know, I don't think we can define exactly what specific things, but he knows.
I see we can't, we.
Can he?
We can't leave it like that because you're opening the door for someone to say, he didn't do this, we told him he should do it. That's, that's why we are where we're at right now.
The bylaw is well-intentioned, but not specific enough.
Well, and we're not in a position to spell this out because we don't do this. And I, I'm not sure how you, you know, you know what, when you see it, you say, oh, that's a good piece of information to have.
I think we should take a look, see what the new database, the new software is going to give us. When is that supposed to be?
All right, so how's this motion going to read because we're not going to wait for that.
Yeah. Let me suggest that the harbor master, starting immediately, keep a transaction log of mooring changes, including creation of a mooring, assignment of a mooring to a person from the waiting list with a position on the waiting list.
Yeah.
To a family member.
Well, yeah, I'm not sure that you can give it to a family member from the waiting list.
No, I'm saying you gotta say, from the waiting list, from a family member, from the change list, wherever it came from.
Isn't it just really a name change, period? And then, you can, in the reason, you can designate why the name attached to the mooring changed. It was inherited from a family member, woman got married and changed her last name. I mean, what you're talking about is name changes, right?
Yeah.
Well, not just name change, I mean, if you came from the waitlist, you'd be a new.
Yeah, it would be nice to have.
Wait, okay, a new assignment from the waitlist or a name change?
Or from the change list.
Or from, so that's a change of location, right? Because you moved, that's different.
Right, but so your number's going to change.
Yeah.
I was just saying, anything that's relevant, you know, it's a lot of different stuff.
But you can get specific, John, we just can't design it at this meeting.
No, we can't.
But, so we just have to wait until we can design it before we ask him to keep any kind of a law?
No, I think we ask the harbor master to keep a transaction log of all additions, deletions, and changes to mooring assignments. And then, these specifics of how that is implemented will be determined based on the new software that is.
Maybe. You don't know that, yeah.
Yeah, because you finagle this stuff, you can, you can track this stuff. But I think what we're, we want to be able to track, have an audit trail of how a mooring was assigned or reassigned.
Right, I totally agree with that part. I don't want to leave the door open.
Right.
For somebody to come back later.
So, the reason someone came and brought this to our attention is because there is wording in the bylaw that is too vague. And the author of the bylaw felt that it was not being implemented, okay? So, I think the other action we have though is to enhance that bylaw to be more specific.
Right, I absolutely agree, but I want to make sure that we do that.
Yes, and so, that should be part of the, so we want the, maybe the motion is that the harbor master must keep a transaction log and, you know, for all the reasons I just said, and that we, I'm sorry, the select board sometime over the summer, pick a date and update the bylaw to.
We can't update the bylaw, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's a.
That's right, we have to propose a bylaw change for the Fall Town meeting.
But is it a bylaw, it's really the harbor regulations?
No, this is a specific town bylaw.
Yeah, it was in the by, so maybe, Jeff, to your point, we kind of get this all cleaned up and the end state is a proposed change enhancement to the bylaw for the Fall Town meeting. And in that way, you have to have everything all on your note by then.
May I suggest that we ask the harbor master to track transaction, to track mooring transactions in any form he wants, subject to our approval at our next. Gets us out of the designing it here.
Yeah. Why don't you use the word details in there somewhere? There's a lot of little information.
Yeah, but you won't be able to actually finalize anything until he, so he may have to come back to us again once he implements or decides what he wants to do about that software.
I'd like, I'd like to get him started.
Yes.
And then, even if it's not perfect.
Get a rate period.
Get a rate.
Yeah.
What about?
Debbie, you got that?
I'll figure it out.
Yeah, that's.
Are we all full of AI?
AI, I don't know.
You seconding anybody?
I, let me.
Was there a motion, I'm not even sure there was.
I know.
Let me suggest, I move that the select board require the harbor master to begin tracking mooring changes in a format of his choice, to be validated by the, at the next select board meeting.
Second.
John?
Yes.
And it says, yes?
Yes.
John, Brian, yeah, one of these things, yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Could I abstain?
Will you talk to Bion?
What?
Yeah. Okay, because you're really kind of the conduit in terms of how things. It's, this is hard, sitting here.
No, I just, I don't know, I just want to make sure it's. I don't want to be back here in six or eight months.
No.
No, you'll be back here in three weeks.
Well, that's.
You sat down with him and you know what you saw.
Yeah, I know. It's all right.
Okay.
Okay.
Fine. Fire department, please let me see structure planning.
Hi, good evening.
Hi.
So, this came up at our department head meeting and Greg recommended just to kind of enlighten you on our pre-plan initiative that we plan on undertaking over the summer and in the fall. This is to evaluate mainly the access to properties, driveways, look at tree, overgrowth, et cetera. And if we find any issues that would impede fire department emergency access, then we notify the residents of our findings and recommend changes. There's no, you know, tea to that, it's just best practices to allow entrance and exit of their residence or their common driveways.
Okay, so this is in addition to the information that is provided on the website, the fire department website, right?
Yes, exactly, so we've actually had a great response from the residents in regards to our community net. Where residents have gone in, added specifics to their residence, maybe specifics to their household members, depending on their medical emergency issues, et cetera. This is purely looking at, you know, driveway entrances. How this came to be was, we were on Proctor Street for a fire line activation and there was two stone pillows that were erected at the end of somebody's driveway, which did not allow for a fire department engine or ladder access. And upon speaking with the resident, it was just because they didn't even think of it. So, they're already in the process of moving that. And this kind of just snowballed into a department-wide effort that said, hey, this is good for, we have a lot of newer members that didn't grow up in Manchester. So, community awareness as well as pre-planning, which will make our response a lot more streamlined.
So, you're going to go through the town, house by house, contacting the homeowners and saying, when can we come by and take a look?
Yeah, I mean, the majority of it, you know, I view Pleasant Street, for instance, a lot of them are going to be drive-by's. Yes, this is where we place the ladder, if there's something, we wouldn't even really have to access somebody's property. Some of the longer driveways that sit off the road, the crews would walk in, drop off a pamphlet, something like that, and just say, hey, you know, this is kind of what our initiative is, and get some feedback from the public.
Okay.
I don't know if this is a nice segue for it, but when I was on the ZDA, it was recently. House numbers. Visible house numbers. Is that a problem for you?
It's gotten better as houses are turned over, part of our smoke detector, carbon dioxide detector inspection. One of the master laws is that there's a visible house number. So, now that there's actually tea to that regulation, we are seeing much better compliance with that. And if we go to a house on a medical or a fire emergency, we notice there's no house numbers, or sometimes the numbers are so subdued that in the middle of the night, we'd never see it, we've recommended some changes to the residents at that point as well.
Yeah, I'm just trying to do site visits on ZDA. At one point, I want to do what the realtor's doing, but saying, you know, we'll come and put some blue jobs in. A lot of these houses, you couldn't find. So, I just, is that, is that something that, is it a requirement? Or is there a, is there a minimum standard as well for the?
So, there's already state law regarding numbers as part of the nine-to-one statutes. We have typically in the past only enforced those during the sale of a property. However, that would be one of the things that was noted on our report to the residents. We found some things that could increase our, or improve our response capabilities.
So, what about the, for the multifamilies, you know, some of our multifamilies have the lock boxes. Would you do a key check as part of this, or would that be a separate thing that we have to request?
So, those key checks have, those were done, we do those annually, we go in at WD-40, check to make sure the keys are still active and working. So, those are actually used quite a bit, and most of those lock boxes, especially in multifamily residents, we actually utilize fairly frequently because we're at a lot of those addresses on a more common basis.
John?
No, I'm working.
Probably the easiest thing to discuss tonight, help.
Yeah.
Okay, oh, thank you very much, that sounds like a great program.
Yeah. Thanks, Jeff.
Drive through my dreams. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is the flag policy. And we've been provided with some flag policies, flag protocols. And when we, when I worked on the flag policy, fairly deliberately did not include how many days for the president and so on and so forth because we do say that on occasions designated by the United States, the Commonwealth and the select board. And listing them specifically didn't seem like a great idea. And the policy on the, when it's raised, it's raised to full and lowered to half, is part of the regulations in the United States code. But having specifics about what the select board, what local people would do, seems like an excellent idea. Okay, we go through the, you get in first, second page, number six. The decisions that the select board would make.
This is on flag protocols?
This is on flag protocols.
Yeah.
Six and seven.
Six, seven, eight.
So, eight was what we experienced last week.
So, was he active?
He wasn't active.
You could say retired too.
But it's three days, not a week and a half. Okay, so, active or retired?
That's a, that's a long list of people.
Yeah, retired is a very long.
So, I, I think that's why that says active otherwise.
Yeah.
I grabbed this from, I grabbed this from Rockport, so.
Oh, is this a? It's very.
That's probably the reason why they only did active, so.
Yes.
I can't, I honestly can't remember why, but I can look back.
I'm sorry, is this draft?
It was a draft, yeah.
This is a draft?
Yes. Yes, the way, yeah, the way Greg, they, I wasn't here and did the packet, so.
So this flag protocols thing in our package, a proposal for us to...
The way it's supposed to look.
Yeah, because I never saw this.
But it's a proposal for us to consider.
Consider.
Got it, okay, thank you for bringing that up.
The one that says it's policy twenty-three dash two is in fact a policy.
Yes, I look at twenty-three two, that is, means nothing to us. Because we're eighty-nine. Our, our, our policy, I think, is like eighty-nine dash...
No, our policy is twenty-three two.
Twenty-three dash two.
Yes.
Maybe it got renumbered.
It was eighty-nine dash two amended to eighty-nine dash two.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Amended.
It was amended and it changed numbers because of our consideration.
Could we consolidate, since all of them are the same length, a current or former Select Board member, a current or Select Board, or, yeah, six, seven, and eight?
Yep.
Consolidate them.
Consolidate those.
And I, I'm just looking at it, I have no problem consolidating, but a current or former, it starts to be get a long, long list of people. I would just say current.
Okay.
For all of these people.
If I want to be, I have to die in office.
You have to die tonight.
It's still time.
I have until, I have until, I have until like eight o'clock tomorrow. Eight o'clock tomorrow to die. I'll see if I can accommodate people here.
I mean, yeah.
I can say goodbye to my family.
Hundreds of all in.
Here we go.
Right now, so I think that can be excessive, yeah.
In, in fact, the only one that is former is the President of the United States.
Free Court Justice is still on there?
No, all of the other ones, oh, well, it does recite retired Chief Justice, retired Chief Justice.
Oh, sorry, retired Chair, it's like what?
But, you know, it says the Vice President, but not the former Vice President.
Right.
So they put the President, they put the Chief Justice on the same category, whatever.
So those came from the state or whatever?
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
But everything, everything else, you have to be in office when this happens.
Yeah.
And I think this is reasonable.
So we're getting rid of former member?
Yeah.
Okay. Same with former Select Board member? Okay.
That'd be nice.
And, and just list of them and then three days or...
Just three days. Now, were you trying?
Three days or interim, whichever is first.
Okay, okay. Whichever occurs first, okay.
So that goes under, displaying the flag at half-staff.
Where are we now, you're looking at?
I'm now looking at thirty, twenty-three.
Yours, okay.
One of the small change I'd like to see is that commemorative flags should be emboldened and underlined.
Okay.
On the display of flags?
There's displaying, there's displaying, displaying the flags, displaying the flags at half-staff, commemorative flags.
Oh, right, yeah, the, oh, yeah, I see where you're talking about, yeah.
Yeah. But that's another major heading, heading.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Um, all right.
What about, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
On the commemorative flags, they're only supposed to be on one specific pole, correct? So do we want to?
Yeah, I don't see that.
I've got...
That's what spawned the discussion at the last meeting, it wasn't our flag policy so much, it's, it was about the logistics of, the polls weren't documented anywhere.
I have...
Someone suggested that we refer to the new flag pole as the community flag pole.
Town flag pole?
Well, I think that becomes...
Well, we have lots of town flag poles.
Lots of town flag poles.
Well, that's correct, and could you fly commemorative flags on, other than the town flag pole?
No, let's call it the community flag pole, and that, that's a big...
Or is that the only flag pole from which commemorative flags fly?
Now we get into that slippery slope again, if we have one spot, one flag pole, and that's if you want, if someone comes, they want to fly something from the community flag, then that's not...
It requires a proclamation.
Same, same policy.
The only thing that's missing is the actual logistics, because I think the intent of the new pole was that to have that be the place, so those logistics.
So we now decide here now that that's not the community flag pole, and from the other flags will fly only from the community flag pole, and these are the criteria for, on the community flag.
We did designate it the official town flag pole in a motion on September third by you.
I was forced into it.
Move that the Select Board designate location number two, because we were deciding, okay. As the location for the official town flag pole for the town of Manchester, by the way.
And we amend that to say that flag pole number two will not be referred to as the community flag.
It was location, we were, this is decided.
Location number two, not me. I just think it just makes it so much simpler.
Well, what makes it, would make it simple and easy for the residents to understand if whatever our decisions were or are, are actually documented in the policy and not just on the meeting minutes, that's the problem, is that John had to go research.
I went back until I saw the discussion.
That's the only place our decision was documented.
Would AI pick that up? I don't know.
What?
Were you using AI in September?
AI, yes.
Okay.
That's the issue, the decision needs to be memorialized in the actual...
File or whatever.
So, file.
Okay, so that needs to be in twenty-three dash two, correct?
Twenty-three dash two, on the second page, the Select Board may authorize the display of commemorative flags at...
At, specific, at the town flag pole.
At the town flag pole.
It's a little bit of a community flag pole, it's not, I'm not saying, very far, I think that just...
I would be specific about the location of that flag pole, because someday the five of us will not be sitting here and they...
While it goes well, I'll still have a flag with the half-staff.
All right, what, next to the town fountain, or I don't know.
Designated, I pull.
Okay.
And then...
But how, okay, that, that's a nice designation, where do we put it?
Two, okay, yeah, so.
In, right in that spot.
To the left of the, well, it could be the right, depending on what you're saying.
Next to the town fountain?
Adjacent to the town fountain.
T-O-W-N-E, because that's the guy's name.
T-O-W-N-E, oh, I get what you're doing.
It's at that county.
So now if you want to really get messed up, we call that the town flag pole, and it's T-O-W-N-E.
The town flag pole, T-O-W-N, next to the T-O-W-N-E.
Oh, good lord.
Only a small T-O-W-N with this conversation happening.
All right, I have, I have another question. And that just relates to the flags that are on the pole at any point in time. I did do a survey, and most of the town, you know, there aren't very many towns that have a flag policy. And those that do, the majority say, if you're flying a commemorative flag, that's the only flag that's on the flag pole. It does not fly below the American flag.
There's no American flag on the, on the...
There is under, when there's nothing else on there. But otherwise, they put the commemorative flag up there, and that would be flying by itself.
So, but let's say, an example being, so the little E town, flag pole, right, County has the American flag and the town, yeah, town flag. If a commemorative flag is to be flown, those two, those two flags get struck?
They get to come down. Right, and I know we have problems, because our flag poles aren't that high, and you start to run out of space, especially if there's a half mast.
So when there's a commemorative, I have no problem with that, there's no commemorative, if there's a commemorative flag, then now the flag would be on the pole.
Yeah, and you put it up there for whatever, the point in time, whether it's a month or a week, or whatever it is. The majority, where I could find a statement, a lot of times it's not stated, but there were one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and that's what they said, eight towns.
And so if we went with that approach, we still have the American flag flying?
When there's nothing else going?
Well, but there's the other flag pole.
Yes.
Which is...
Yeah.
On town property, right? Which, by the Veterans Memorial with the M-I-A-P-O-W flag. The other question that came up is whose pole is that? I, I think the answer is, it is a town flag, it belongs to the town, and decisions about what flies on it are made by the Select Board, I thought, still, because we made the decision to not put a commemorative flag on that anymore and move together. So by following the logic, that means we make decisions about what flies on that town flag pole that is on the, on the Veterans Honor Roll.
Yeah, I think we make the decisions, but I don't think we manage that, I think...
No, 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 but I, there's, there's decision-making, and then it's how it's managed. And I just think for clarification, we should document in this that that is still a town flag pole and what is decide, you know, whatever flies on that is decided by the, the Select Board. However, it sounds like we have, not outsourced, but delegated management of that pole to the Legion?
I think what we should say is that that flag pole is an integral part of the Honor Roll and should fly the American flag and the POW flag.
But if that were to, but I would also just specify, because that, that is what Select Board voted on before, I just would make it clear in the documentation that that could be changed by a vote of the Select Board. Because you just want to make it clear.
That's just, it's, it's just one additional sentence at the top of that paragraph that says the Select Board will authorize the display of all flags on all...
There you go.
All flag poles.
On town property.
And then you start with the...
On town property, yes, yeah.
And then, and then you just continue on with the sentence that exists.
And then, just a clarification, we have commemorative flag flying at full height, full staff, the American flag, but no flag's supposed to be higher, so if you drop the American flag to half mast, half-staff, commemorative flag has to...
Yes.
Okay, that's subtle, but correct. Okay.
Okay, all we said...
Did you get the additional sentence?
When other flags are flown at half-staff, the commemorative flag will also be flown at half-staff. Okay, I didn't get the sentence where we... Maybe we need a sentence...
The first sentence on that should be the Select Board will authorize the display of all, of flags on all flag poles.
Okay.
Can you see what happened in Providence? You read about that? City Council voted to raise the flag.
Oh, I saw that.
So I'm glad we have a policy in place.
That's their prerogative, yeah. We don't live there.
All right, so you just add that one sentence right at the top?
Okay, the Select Board may authorize to...
Will authorize, or authorizes.
Okay, authorizes the display of flags?
On all...
On all...
Flag poles.
On town.
On town property.
On property, on town, yeah, because we don't deal with the school.
Yeah. Okay.
Period, and then you just continue, the next sentence is the sentence that exists. Although we had, we made the distinction between town and town.
Yes.
I'm not going to hear that.
Okay, so the Select Board authorizes the display of flags at town-owned properties?
Right.
As an expression of the town's official government speech?
I wouldn't even get that.
That's important.
That's important.
Yeah, yeah, yes, but that's, but that is the next sentence, that's in the next sentence.
So, so John, I think the only concern with modifying that first sentence, as you suggested, it's right in the middle of all of the verbiage around commemorative flags.
Okay.
So I agree that we should clarify that the Select Board has, you know, the authority to authorize the display of flags at town properties, but I just wouldn't put it in the middle of that whole commemorative section.
I would take that's...
Start with the philosophy, which is the first, absolutely first thing, flag poles owned or maintained serve as a non-public forum for the display of governmental, of non-governmental flags authorized by the Select Board. I think that covers... And doesn't say which particular pole, but they are owned, owned or maintained, I think, covers both the poles in front of town.
Are you saying that this sentence may be redundant?
I'm, I'm saying that this is... That's the, the philosophy, that's the foundation. Now, don't get me...
I, I'm, I'm thinking that that sentence may go under the policy, because the title of that is display of, of the flags, and that's what we're really talking about, which is...
I just lost my place.
Are you here? It's under policy of display, because it says display of the flags, and what we want to say is that the town has the authorization to decide what flags to display.
I think the philosophy says it very clearly.
Okay.
Owned or maintained by the town of Manchester. Display governmental, non-governmental flags authorized by the Select Board. Then we're, add, add some stuff in the half-staff.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
And I think we can leave, the Select Board may authorize the display of commemorative flags at town-owned properties.
No, yeah, correct.
So...
Now it just opens up to, if you can, if the Select Board can decide on... I just want, I want to...
No, the change that you made...
Yeah, I want to isolate it.
You have to specify that flag pole in that sentence.
Right.
You have to do that.
Okay, so all commemorative flags go on...
The town flag pole.
Adjacent, adjacent to the town.
Now you're just, this is going to be problematic.
Okay.
Adjacent to the fountain in front of the town hall.
Adjacent to the town fountain?
Okay, for policies, we need a first reading and a second reading.
Okay.
Can we take this as a first reading?
Okay.
Yes, yes.
It's fine.
And, and...
Yep.
Address it. There's nothing in this that says that we can't take down the American flag and we're flying a commemorative flag, so...
Nothing right now.
The problem, you know, as of Memorial Day, we're going to be flying a commemorative flag. Not Memorial Day, the week after.
No, week after.
The week after.
May 31st.
May 31st.
This is Saturday.
So on that Saturday, we will put up the pride flag and take down the American flag from that pole.
Right.
That flag, that was the only flag from that pole.
That will be the only flag on that pole, and that will solve the problem of too many flags for half-staff.
Right, right.
Okay, and we need to, as a part of the first reading, we, we need to put a sentence in that, for that flag pole, the American flag does come down.
We, we can decide anything we want, under this...
Uh, that's correct, the only thing we, the only thing we're tying ourselves to is that commemorative flags go on that flag pole.
Yes.
But beyond that...
Alone.
We can say alone, we can say with the flag at this point, we just know that that flag is going on that pole.
I just like to keep it simple, it's...
Okay.
You, you may certainly speak if you need to identify yourself.
Sure.
Sure, Lisa, I'll just keep a button report, and I think all of the conversation is helpful because of the, the challenge, should the pride flag be under the American flag and there be a reason for half-mast? So you've all resolved that by taking the American flag off, letting the...
Right.
In this instance, the pride flag go by itself.
Right, that's right, the pride flag or any commemorative flag at half-staff will still be, won't be below, will be right and still at half-staff.
So on May 31st, in this instance, the pride flag goes up by itself.
Right.
I'm doing that.
Yeah, so that's what we'll do. It's not written in writing, but we can call that shot every time.
Yep.
But that's the way many towns are doing it.
Okay.
So we brought back at the next Select Board meeting for a second reading?
Yes.
Good.
Okay, and the next is follow-up.
Okay, thank you, Lisa.
I am asking you for permission to work with town council, put together a home rule petition consistent with the town meeting vote. I move so moved.
Second, second so moved. He has the second.
Thank you. I'm sorry, we should probably vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Yeah, Brian. Kathy, yes.
I have a vote.
John's, yes.
She's already dismissed me, I'm gone. I'm just jumping over the.
You're still alive.
Yeah.
The next thing is liaison updates.
Uh, let's see, what have I got here? Nothing too much in the library, I can say the library was talking about having some sort of a facilities committee in the past week or two, but that gets folded into what Chuck is. It's another building that, but whatever's going on there, facilities wise, that's fine. The DPW, and Chuck mentioned, so I, two weeks ago, I went in there and said, I want to see the DPW, and Nate said, well, we're going to meet at the fire department to start, but why don't you come there and then we'll go to the DPW. It wound up being a tour of the fire department, the police department, our DPW, and Essex's safety complex. Every one of us should go through those tours and see where, where we stand, and I'm not saying Essex is a bar, it is a bar, they got a lot of stuff there. Have any of you been through that facility?
Yeah, I have only been to the meeting one.
It's a classy joint.
And the roof is failing.
The roof is failing.
Oh, I didn't hear that, but it was not a rainy day?
No, it started when they built it, right? It hasn't been right since they built it.
Okay, well, you can't tell that from walking through, it looks, it looks really good.
I understand why they were handing out rose.
The, the other thing that I'm holding out, and I think it will sometime in the next couple of weeks, I want to go through another DPW facility on Rockport or something like that, to see what it's.
Rockport is currently building a new one.
Yeah, I don't know where they are, maybe that's, that was mentioned, but if it's not operating, I don't.
Operating, yeah.
Okay, then I don't want to, I want to see something that's.
Yeah.
You might want to also do a drive by in Middleton, much larger, much larger town, but.
Nate, yes, Nate showed it to me, yes, that's where the golf course used to.
Yes. So I mean, it's, and they've got.
And I may arrange that, but it, it's good perspective to go through all of these places and see where we're at and where these places are at and where our bar might or might not be in terms of what we want, what makes sense, but. We're struggling with some of these facilities, there's no question. Historic District Commission, June 5th, hearing on cargo, public hearing, perhaps the only public hearing on that space. It might be continued to the next month, I don't know, we'll see, but there's a discussion, there will be a discussion, and they will have obviously plans as to what's going to fit together. And Council on Aging, had a chat with Susan Beckman, who's heading the money raising initiative, and she's moving that along pretty well, had a discussion with some of the friends, which is going to be indirectly managing some of the donations that come in, that can't come into a town account, it has to come into some outside account. So they put that, she's making progress and starting to schedule some interviews with some people in town, not in terms of donors per se, but in terms of what their thoughts are and what they think about it. And she seems to be moving along pretty well in that regard. So things have moved from, you know, you know, from the senior center purchase focus now to the money raising focus. The closing, I suppose, is still on schedule, do you know from all of us?
We're shooting for the 15th.
June?
June, that was a discussion we had when we voted, when we voted on it back before town meeting, to try to get it done, 13, 12, I think it's still here. The condo docs, we're just reviewing. I think, actually, I, I don't want him to speak here, I believe the Masons are looking at the first draft, making their notes, and get it back to us very soon.
Well, it's on schedule as far as you know.
I was hoping for.
Good.
I know that they're, they're, they're anxious. Because they also want to get involved, I, I think that Nate has talked to John Harden from Molson Lewis, the architect, and Masons want to start getting involved with some of those discussions as well.
Do they have a timeline on when they want to start to move on some of their?
A lot of it is, it must depend on us, they don't want to get started and then find out that it's faltered, or they've started their construction, and it's not harmony with our construction and some disruption, so, but they would like to be in the ground, what was the, you had this discussion, right?
Yeah.
Even possibly break, you know, next, you know, next spring.
Okay.
Which I think.
I think they, like I said, they could build it to a room, but it's not going to really affect.
Right, I mean, we have to, there's some infrastructure work that has to be done that would impact.
Both.
Both of them, okay.
Okay, yeah.
Which would require some, spending some money that we might not have.
I'm sorry, they're, they also expand, we were.
Yeah.
No, they're.
They're expanding.
Pushing out their end.
They're, they're expanding out like 15 feet to the.
Roof, anything, the building envelope is part of a shared.
They're pushing out their end.
Condominiums, your envelope is a shared thing, even if it's just over their rooms. It's a shared expense, you're going to be careful.
I know, so that's, that's why a lot of it is dependent upon our ability to get started.
So I think, I'm not sure who's communicating with Susan about the fundraising, but she should be aware of whatever construction timeline the Masons are interested in, because she may want to accelerate some fundraising, because it, it is a shared space, they are, it's a shared envelope that they are building.
Yeah.
But they're responsible for the addition of the blue room.
I mean, they can stop pouring slabs and stuff like that.
Understand, but I'm just saying from an insurance standpoint, that's, that envelope, the roofs and the siding is shared stuff, and we have some type of financial responsibility for the building envelope after, they may pay for the construction, but we'll be paying for the insurance and all the other stuff.
So that, one more time, it's all dependent on us.
All right, well, that's.
They're anxious to get started.
That's, that's a year out.
Right, I would say probably, yeah.
But I, my comment was just, Susan ought to be aware, if she's not, that our financial responsibility of certain things begins with that, not just our own renovation for our seniors.
Okay, that's financial responsibility, not financial.
And it could be increased insurance costs, it could be whatever it is, but as soon as they put a roof and siding on whatever they're doing, that is part of the common area, and we have some financial responsibility to that.
Well, I mean, there's some subtle.
So, that's why.
Things behind, like insurance, see, that's an operating activity, not a building activity.
Right.
Operating activity is going to wind up in our town budget.
Right, but, so what happens is that, we'll call them pre-construction costs, or the soft costs associated, okay, until such time as you get a certificate of occupancy. So you have money, okay, so we need a lot of money to build a building, and then, once the certificate of occupancy takes over, then it becomes.
Sarah Melish has her hand up. Sarah, can you help us?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to remind people that the renovations were subject to a special permit and perhaps a variance, I can't remember, but there's a time limit on that.
Right.
And if the change, if changes occur on what's going to occur to the building, it needs to come back before the ZBA. And, and I, you know, a variance is only good for a year, but there was an extension based on when the decision was issued by the state for three years, and I just don't know what the timeframes are, people need to be aware of that.
Right, so we've got the, you gave us, the ZBA gave the town or the variance, was it September, Sarah?
When was it written?
I, I think you expedited.
It was written, it was written, right, it was written before October.
Right, so you, you expedited the, the decision.
So you get three, so because it was issued in 2024, you have three years from that date.
That shouldn't be a problem.
Right, if we're.
If that's a problem, it's a problem.
It's a major problem if we're looking at that.
Still, I'm just, my, my.
But if you, if you change.
Fundraising, she ought to be aware of these milestones, that's.
Right, and if you change the floor plan, it needs to come before us, and you lose that three-year extension.
But does it, what do you mean lose, in other words, it doesn't start again, it just ends?
So the state passed some type of law that said that any special permit or variance issued between, I think it was 1124, 1123 to 11123124, was extended three years. And so if, if they have to come back before us, that would be a new variance or a special permit, I'm not sure.
Outside that window, yeah.
Yeah, and, and so then it would be a special permit's good for three years and a variance for one.
Okay.
And so if they change the footprint, footprint, they need to come before us again, so it's just something to be aware of.
Okay, all right.
But that's just the start of the construction, not the completed.
Start of construction, perhaps.
Okay, all right, so I understand what you're saying. We're not anticipating any changes at this point.
I heard there were going to be, so I don't know.
Oh, did you? Okay. Okay. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you for your insight.
Kathy, Downtown Improvement Committee is meeting on Wednesday morning, the regular meeting, and at that time, they're going to present again two major packages that they're working. One is the partnership with the Chamber of Commerce to create a communications package, like an ambassadors package, I think the intent is to give it to commercial realtors so that when they are trying to fill empty spots, they have a, you know, here's why it's wonderful to do business in Manchester, so we're going to be reviewing that Wednesday morning, and the other item was a, kind of like a new business incubation program. I'm not exactly sure what it is, but certainly it's a public meeting, anybody is welcome to, we're hard with the chamber to try and do whatever we can to make sure Manchester has a good reputation for businesses to come into, so they're focused a little bit less on the aesthetics, you know, they had their DIP program 1.0 and 2.0, but with the Culver project, you know, a lot of that has kind of been put on hold, so they're putting their energy into helping the chamber and, and the town make the, the connections to viable businesses into the downtown.
Hang on. I, I've spoken to Cheryl a lot lately, but there's nothing. I think, I mean, they're, right now, their focus is just getting the beach up and running, and, you know, the junior heart, the, the, you know, the summer camp, you know, so that's, that's right.
Who has the concession there?
Yeah, that's.
Okay, is that just like two-year, three-year deal?
This is their last year, yeah, you know, they haven't just, everything I've heard is that it sounds very happy with what they're doing.
Good.
I mean, they hire local kids, and, and actually, it works out very well for her because it gives her some flexibility to schedule between the, her three locations.
Yes.
I missed the planning board, fortunately, but I was at the Harvard Advisory, and two main takeaways, where there was talk about the enterprise fund, and I would say not everybody on that board's in favor of having an enterprise fund for the Harvard, but I'd say it's an ongoing discussion.
Just clarification, did they specify why?
I think there's some reluctance over, when it first starts out, there would be a small balance, and what happens when there's a need for dredging, there's a need for, you know, replacement of boats or whatever, if there's not enough money there. But I think that would be a bond by the town, dredging, depending on what grants are available. So I, I just think there's still some back and forth there to. Yeah, the Harvard Master Office, there's more to talk about that, occasions with bathrooms. Bion has another idea for Reed Park, talked about, I was trying to imagine it, but he was talking about building being like at the edge of the water, but off to the side, and then changing that gangway to come up, so that, I guess it would have kind of a, a deck to the front of it, and then the gangway would attach the front of the office instead of.
So you'd be walking past it.
Yeah, he's keeping an eye on everybody.
I guess I wasn't 100% getting what he was.
Well, I think he was saying that it has, at some point, everything has to be upgraded over there anyway.
Right, so I guess if they could attach it together, there might be some more grant money there.
Oh, really?
That's my understanding.
Was this the one he was talking about putting that up on pilings?
Yeah.
Over the mud flap.
Right.
So it doesn't, doesn't impact.
I don't know if.
It's a pocket sum.
That's in that project, that's Shepherd 91.
Right, so I don't know how that would work, and then you got to think about monetization if it's on pilings. I don't know, so that, there was talk there.
But there's, but there's still, there's ongoing discussion.
Yeah, yeah, so it's an ongoing discussion, I don't think the same thing's set in stone. And the steering committee, there was talk about re-implementing that to, for the Harvard Master Office slash bathrooms, so they might be coming to us.
Okay.
Sorry, a different committee?
No, we had a steering committee years ago for the Harvard Master Office and bathrooms.
Well, now I'm confused, we have a facilities committee, which I thought the Harvard Master's Office was going to be part of that, we have a Harvard Management Committee, and we have a Harvard Advisory Committee, we've got three committees, do we really need a fourth one to talk about this?
I'm not saying, I'm not saying that we do, I'm not saying that we don't, I'm just saying that.
Yeah, it was, I remember.
This is the discussion, and.
I know that I've talked to a former member of that.
Yeah, I have too.
And she's willing to get back on it, and I've spoken to a couple of people, so they'd be willing to get on it, not for lack of.
So a task force for the specific reason of, of identifying a location and design for the Harvard Masters Office.
Yeah, we could call it.
If that gets stood up, I would recommend de-scoping that from the facilities committee we just authorized. You don't want two different committees talking about it, right?
No, right.
So if you start up something else, I would recommend de-scoping it from the other committee, that's all.
Well, just for that specific.
Right, right, yes.
Right, we're not there, I'm just throwing it out there, but whatever.
I was going to ask, when are they going to start meeting on next year's budget challenge? If they have a history of taking the summer to not talk about budget, but given the challenges, I don't personally feel we can wait until September to start talking about it, so.
I think they need next week.
My experience is, I don't know how they do it up there, but usually the administration works on it over the summer, and the board sees it, usually around September they start.
Right, but given the fact that our district has kind of run out of options to just do what they've been doing, and a restructuring.
and a restructuring of something might be needed.
Yeah, not, not disagreeing with that at all.
It's like, because you're exactly right, Jeff, that's, that's how it's been worked.
That's the usual how it works.
But if this is not going to be business as usual, then it can't be business as usual, I guess would be my only.
I will convey our concern that we got through this one, but.
Running out of options.
Yeah. Um. Any other questions? Consent agenda. Is there a motion for a consent agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
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 It's close, not too close.
I think the town's administrator's report will have to wait.
Yeah, I don't know why you had that on there.
Oh, he, I may have had. Uh, yes. His, his report handed to us at Potterhouse Hill. We should remember to vote. Yes, yeah, I know rightly. And, uh, June 30th is, um, the